Yeah.
All right, if you can't hear us, they can chat. I just gotta check. I cannot understand what Mochi is saying. Can you turn up her microphone or have her speak louder?
Okay, please be clever. Although now we're on this.
Yeah, so that one should be on the overhead mic.
It's gonna zoom mic.
We had some technical problems.
Yeah.
Switch mics, but now the mic should be back to where they normally are.
So basically, there's a long list of items that we talk about, you know, none of those have any that we have not have any other further discussions. They're just like a casual conversation yesterday. But I think it warrants the county to look into it and perhaps maybe have the city to come to, you know, before the board to have a discussion and then we can design the next step. Because some of those issues that we are, the county actually is looking into, for example, children rentals, affordable housing, recreational tourist oriented land use activities, things like that. And we always talk about how the city and the county can work together. And we do have an interlocal agreement with the city. But we, we try, you know, multiple years, a long time ago, I believe the contract is still valid, that we are willing to work together during the plan forward. But then we have staff turnover and then we always have to go back to square one. So other than that contract that was signed like 20 years ago, I don't really know if there's anything else in place that we can continue this conversation.
So I, I was on the city white salmon council meeting this last week. We had a brief discussion. I also met with the mayor for a couple hours this last week. And had a little bit of talk with Brendan as well. And we've been talking about, you know, how we can work together more effectively in urban growth boundary for years and years. And that it's usually as far as it goes because well, we all have other things that are higher priority and far higher on the priority list. And the city definitely wants to up this on our priority list. They now have a planner. Because it's also been difficult for them because they haven't had a full time planner for a long time either. And so, so now they're seeing that this is the opportunity. And I said, well, yeah, sure, let's do it. But if you want to have a say in the short plot, then and you're planning on annexing it in, why don't you annex it in? I mean, we have our process. And then this goes like into all sorts of issues that deal with the city that it's not even like planning. We're talking the very far edges of the urban growth boundary. But in that area, it's still served by city water. And you've got these issues when we finalize a short plot and the water lines haven't been completed yet. And then that turns into a big.
Right, that kind of brings up a question for me. What happens? I would imagine if you're outside the annexed area, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not like super knowledgeable on this. And they go get a permit for a well and then get annexed into the city. You can't have a well at the city, right?
They can.
So is that maybe what's.
There's quite a few wells within the city, but then the city can come back and say, you're within our service area. We want you to hook up.
If they actually have the water enough to watch you.
Same, same thing happened with the city and down in the RV park, you know, they put the sewer line through there. The RV park paid all the money for, you know, the septic system and then the city put sewer lines and you need to hook up. And they're like, we're not going to pay you to hook up. We were doing just fine. We're not going to get charged twice for this. So I mean, it's, it's these issues that you see that continually pop up of that just means that we need some sort of policy on hand on how when we're doing something in that really close UGA area, whether the areas that are likely to be annexed that we can be on the same page. And I just, you know, my thing to them is just, go ahead, you can have that, enjoy it.
Right, I have no problem with them. Annexing what they want, I just, they will find trouble with me. If the county just paid for something and then they want to annex it, they need to annex it before the county paid for it.
Well, yeah, that, that's the part I don't really understand because they, they have the ability to. They can control it exactly as they want to. They just need to annex it. But the issue in the past has always been annexation, that they, there's infrastructure investments that need to get made. And we've had that happen before where we have built new roads, we've extended stuff. And then I'm thinking of where ICE is. And we helped do all that. And then the city just annexed it and we didn't get the tax base, even though the greater taxpayers of the county paid for that. And that's not fair.
That is not fair and I'm not interested.
And so I'm happy to help, you know, try to coordinate kind of a common vision for the area. But I think they do need to be forthcoming about what areas are you planning on annexation? And you have to understand, I'm not going to support spending county resources that we are not going to get reimbursed for. It's like, great, I'd love to have somebody else build all this stuff for me and then I get to just take it on and get it for free. And I get all the tax base from it. And I have to do it. I understand why they want that, but so why would we do that?
As a next step, I think probably a good thing to do, we have the planner and Mochi and this, the mayor and I all sit down and talk about, you know, what, what, what are going to be the important things and what we need to focus on? Because there's a litany of things they'd like to deal with. And I think we need to kind of put that in a box and bring it, that's something that we can bring back. I mean, I think it is.
Yeah.
I would suggest to maybe also improve public works because road and stormwater issues.
Right, yeah. Well, yeah, and then Pat, and of course, public works, we'd rather have the two sides.
Two sides. I didn't mean it like that. No, 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 I know. I've been done like that. Can you elaborate a little bit? Because I'm a little, like, the grant opportunities for the cities because we don't fully plan under GMA. Can the city plan, can they, is it only the, can they in their jurisdiction, can they say we're a fully planning GMA city?
I don't know that for a fact. I've been looking to the, you know, what's required for the city.
Because I, I'm going to say for me, that's going to be a really heavy lift, like, like, here's the pen in my cold bed hand, but so.
I wouldn't do that far.
Will you go talk to anybody that's done it, voluntarily did it and they wish it was the worst thing they ever did?
Pretty much the same. I just won't say it out loud.
But I'm willing to, I mean, like, you know.
And just maybe because if, if they are fully planned GMA cities, they can enjoy the benefit of which too, right? So, but, but I, you know, I did ask.
I'm curious if they can do it as a city.
That's what I, that, that was a legitimate question. I don't know how that works. Because my experience with counties, not cities, many counties on the east side of the state and some on the west side, you know, that voluntarily or some involuntarily were, you know, did, you know, chose to fully plan under GMA to get the, the grant dollars and, you know, wished they did not do it. And there is no way out. It's like the mafia. Once you're, you're, because there is no, it is, you cannot. Well, no, it is. You cannot, counties have asked, we would take a legislative change to the, to the act, to the growth management act to allow, there is only an on-ramp. There is no exit. So.
Once we got you, we got.
We got you forever. And that hundred thousand dollars we got from you, we bought your soul with that money.
And it's going to cost you way.
Way more than that. So, so again, heavy, I just want to be clear where my personal commissioner position is.
Well, and that's why I was mentioning, my personal position is the same thing, just maybe not in this harsher word.
That's a first.
So I don't know that there's a whole lot of policy case for this.
Kindred, yeah, or me.
Mom told me I couldn't have Red Bulls.
Good job. Apparently that's been the problem.
As you see the clock.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, yeah, then I would have calling with Lee trying to get a meeting scheduled.
Meeting scheduled, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Jared? Yes, go ahead. Earlier in that discussion of the Delaport Park, things might have changed in the last couple of years, but it's within the area of Google and Google Foundation used to typically try and fund things around their data farms and Dell Sports probably was in that. So parks and things like that. So having them look into Google Foundation might be.
Okay.
A source of funds or matching funds.
Okay, good, good information to have. Uh, okay, let's go ahead and do the Glenwood Town Hall because I believe the prosecutor's by the post.
Did the prosecutor wait for two minutes while I run that?
Absolutely. Yep. Well, we'll recess for ten, two minutes. Not recess, we'll sit here for two minutes. We're going to pull board back. No, no, you're good. Go ahead. Yeah. Now there's no quorum, so. There was actually a coup.
And we looked into the issue of that property down in sports.
And that's what I thought that we, and I think we have kind of a standing order with public working buildings and grounds to try to get a full title report in them, but the title companies are not doing any work.
Well, we went through this six, seven years ago.
It's sketchy. Right, we couldn't actually prove we own it.
We can't prove it's ours.
Right.
Let's put a halt to discussions and convey.
Yeah. Well, can we convey whatever, whatever interest we have in?
If someone's willing to take it with all sorts of caveats that we cannot represent that as ours, so sure. You can always give away someone else's property.
I get whatever interest I have.
You know, everyone acts as our, the titles.
Right. Right. Well, I know, I know there's issues.
You guys could plant grass and mow the acres.
We could do what?
Plant some grass and mow the acres.
I would. It all takes money.
But the problem is, once you do that, you gotta deal with that term maintenance.
You're telling me I'm doing that on property I don't even know is ours?
Well, the school had agreed to do that, but when that was in, when the school, they ceased.
We started, we stopped maintaining that.
In this state today, over visionary offices in Oregon, if somebody donates land for parks, goes back to the.
I hear around the visionary, you're not using it for the purposes.
Well, that's the thing is. Yeah, that, that'll be fun trying to find who's, who still, who is an interest, who does revert back to the 1930s.
I'm sure I had it on the air.
Yeah.
That property was 1930.
You could have, yeah, I believe so. Wow, believe me, read the, yeah. Really? Even that language was commonplace in the 1930s?
And all that, I think it was from the 1930s.
Wow, okay. I was trying to give the benefit of the doubt to the species and say. Yeah, it's interesting to me for a historical context, things have changed a bit. Okay, Glenwood. So I guess we'll, I'll open it up to discussion. I think the prosecutor's looking for a direction as far as what the board wants to support, one way or the other. You can just, or a recap of it, because we haven't had a chance to talk since. What you observed, what you saw, what you thought.
I, I, I think you all know, and I said publicly that originally I was not a fan of continuing this out because I, I guess I would say I'm cheap and I don't think we have a lot of chance for any. But I'll go, so guess I would say by talking to people, including the people up at Glenwood, this affects their future as far as I'm concerned. And I, I have to look at it as if I lived at Glenwood, if I lived at Glenwood, what would I want my county to do for me, what I want the county to continue to fight or not continue to fight? And I guess that answer, number one to me is solely made up by what has the Akamai Nation done to discipline the individual that started this whole case with the rape of a minor? And it's my understanding, the answer is nothing. So what's going to happen the next time? And what if I had a daughter? And what if I live there? Would I feel comfortable in the answer? All of those is no. So I have to go to continue the fight and take it to the springboard.
Next, me, um. I guess just first recap as far as for me, I, I thought it was a productive meeting. I was, as I had said there, I was impressed. I think this has been a, this has been a contentious issue. Less so probably Glenwood in other places. But there, there's been significant pushback in the past from, from folks as far as pursuing, continuing. I think, I think people raised some really valid points as far as not pursuing it. Both the cost and then also the, you know, chances prevailing. And then the, the, you know, damage, I guess, to the, the relationship that we're trying to build with the tribe. Those are really valid concerns that were raised. But for me, I'm going to support continuing, you know, to get, because for me, I want a final answer. And I think there is, that if we don't go forward, there's always going to be this open question was, you know, that we had something and we can't change our mind later. This is, this is our last chance. And there will be an end to this. And I, I want to get a final answer, understanding that we're going to petition the US Supreme Court. We have no way of knowing whether they will pick it up or not pick it up. And if they do, if, if, you know, our point of view will prevail. I, I feel like it's worth the investment to have a final, final decision. And whatever that decision is, I've always said that all along. I got, I believe in the rule of law and once the courts have ruled on this, then I will, I will implement it as far as I will, and we're, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to be sniping about it for years to come. It's like, no, it's, it's, that, you know, we, we made our case, it's closed, whatever it is, it's closed and we go on and we start. Because I, I believe regardless of what the decision of the, if the Supreme Court picks it up, there will be some level of joint management of that area inevitably. There already is, I mean, and so we're going to have to build those relationships about how we're going to do that. But I think it's the place to start is after we absolutely know what the playing field is and then we'll, we'll go from there. So I, I, I will say I will support us petitioning the US Supreme Court.
So for me, this is one of the more difficult decisions so far since I sat on this board. I mean, it's been going on a hundred years. I would usually support getting the final say, but then in essence, though, for me, the big one was when the Ninth Circuit didn't want to pick it up, the whole board. The fact that all three of, all three voted against, you know, our, our belief that in the early 1900s that Congress did change the boundary. I try to look at the bigger picture and the odds that we are going to win. I try to look at the bigger picture and see what the Supreme Court has done in the last couple of years. And it, the, to me, the final say is probably already been set. And I may disagree with it. I may not like, I may hate it. I may not like it at all. But in the end, the final say has been said. And, and I respect the, I mean, I don't, don't love the Ninth Circuit, don't get me wrong. But I do respect the judicial opinions and we put our best foot forward. We said what we needed to say. The tribe has spent a hundred years building a case for this. We haven't spent a hundred years building the case. And, you know, they, every, every few years, they would just edge a little bit, change the lines on the maps, change the state. And then it feels like we literally have no support for them when the state didn't come out and support us like they used to. That said a lot that, I mean, I'm not one for, for not fighting and losing battle, you know, based on principle. But at some point, you gotta, you gotta get over it and move on and start working together. And like you said, it's going to be jointly managed, no matter what. It's not going to be pretty for a while. I think that for my, my personal belief, the best thing for a lot of those people in the valley is to start. I mean, you're going to, we're going to have two years where they're not going to know again. And the worst thing is not knowing, right? And it, for those reasons, I support the, the board's decision, but I'm going to be, I'm going to be a no vote. But I definitely, I 100% support what you both, both had to say. I respect your opinions. I respect your decision.
And that's what I was just going to say. Even though it sounds like we disagree on this going forward, I, I do believe that you had some very good and valid arguments. I, I have some of the same. And I, and I respect your choice on this.
I would, I would add that. Okay, Mr. Prosecutor, do you need something formal from us?
Once they will.
Take a vote.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we give the prosecutor guidance to move forward with this case to the Supreme Court.
Do you want me to second? Okay, I will step down and second that motion. Any discussion, any further discussion is not like we haven't had discussion on this, on this issue. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion passes two to one, what the record reflect that.
And can, when you put that in our packet, can you highlight it so we don't accidentally? When we go to sign, thanks.
Cover my name over.
Yeah, so that there's no accidental signatures or anything weird. Are you, are you going to make a resolution that we're signing?
I was not, I can't.
We have it on record.
That's fine. If he doesn't want something, sorry.
We need a resolution, direct Gavin.
Right, okay. No, I just didn't know if you wanted.
I would also like the record to show how much I appreciate our prosecuting attorney for all the work that he's put into this over the years. This has been a very long slog. He, he's acted with the utmost professionalism in working and fighting this fight that's been being fought for a very long time. And I just, I just want the record just to show that he's done a great job.
Okay. All right, well, we will move on. Because I'm assuming Prosecutor Canal, you want to go last? Okay, so under Board Penning, I'll give an update. I did meet on Wednesday last week when we were talking, traveled over to Wapato, met with the tribal housing authority, completely unrelated to Glenwood. It is that, it is an exercise in compartmentalizing, which we are doing really well at that. I would say I, so was again invited to come over. I went and then also the Wishram School, a superintendent and their facilities manager slash athletic director slash everything. Ty Churchwell went as well. And then Clyde, the fire commissioner went over as well to continue. Was mostly to have a, just they had sent us the draft payment and load of taxes agreement, which had routed, I, I assume that got shared. It had not got shared. I, I'll, I'll share that. Okay, all right, you'll share it. Thank you. I can't share it. That would be bad. Understanding that there, the, it was, I knew it was going to be a, it was going to be a crunchy conversation because the, while the, the Pilt Agreement is a Pilt Agreement, understanding that that, those projects typically are not required to pay any taxes. There is from their funder, what, there is a formula that is built into the funding agreement on a per residence that they can go up to the maximum. They, they were offering and are offering to go to the maximum on that. But it is still, I calculated the, the payment is about 12%, 12 to 13% of what the tax rate would be if you took that. I pulled the values for the houses from the building permit and then just ran it through the levy rates for this year, just to get, just an, some idea of what that was. Again, I had to kind of communicate that it's not, it's, it's, they don't really have, there's nothing to negotiate. There is, they have no discretion beyond, they already set it at the maximum. But I wanted them to understand that, you know, this doesn't even come close to pay for providing the services that we want. It was actually, it, it was okay, like they understood that, but I think they were concerned. They were mistakenly concerned that we can decide not to provide services. And that's, is not, like, we were going to say, no, we're not going to sign the agreement. And then we're going to carve out this area that we're just not going, that, that's actually not an option for us. We have to provide the services.
So legally, that is, I was under the impression that was, not that we would have done it, but I thought that was.
No, because they're not, it's not trust land. It's, it's no different than any other. We have, we have non-revenue paying, non-revenue generating properties that we provide services for that fees are taxed at them for maybe people are on senior exemptions or they're.
Because I was, I was thinking of fire halls around the county or around the country had done that, maybe they can't do it.
No, as far as, so we cannot, so. But what was communicated in the school district and the fire district, again, are, are, we're very disappointed, but also, you know, what, they weren't saying, we're not, we're, we're not going to provide the services. We're, we're going to provide the services. We have to provide the services. But what can we do? Like you, you obviously can't write a check to pay to provide those services. But what are other things that we could do or you could do or you can help us do besides money that would help? And so they were very interested in that. And so, because the fire district said, really what we need is a new fire hall up on, up there, up on the heights. And maybe you could donate the land for that. Or maybe you, we, we could jointly go after grant dollars to build the, a new fire station or a new engine or whatever. They loved that idea. They said absolutely. In fact, they did. Their grant writing person, their finance person is now working on that with the fire department to see about what is available, what they could maybe go after. They, they may have access to dollars that we don't, that we don't even know about. And so we said, that's the kind of stuff we're talking about. And so they're like, okay, it's just, we understand. You know, you're not the typical, yeah, would be nice for us to get. I mean, frankly, if you paid 100% of the taxes, it actually wouldn't pay to provide the services. But we know that 12% is really not, really not. And we just want some acknowledgement of that. So it was super productive meeting, good collaboration. They're also working with the school district because it's the same issue where they ultimately are probably, they need a new school. Because they have their, they have 70 kids in the school now. They're anticipating their current facility. They could have about 110 in the facility. The project is at full build out. They said they really should plan on additional 90 kids. So that puts about 160. And so they, at some point, so they're either, again, it's that, we're going to have to look for either temporary, you know, some portables or something. And that's, you know, something that they can help out with if they're, so. So good meeting. There, we're trying to get a date where they're going to come over here and tour the, the project. Because they actually have it, they, they've been on it, but not as a, not as a board. And I did think it was interesting, they did caution me that any that they do, you know, they're a separate housing authority, they're a separate board, but there is some interconnection with the tribal council. And so they just said sometimes they want to set a policy, they, they have a policy direction that they are going in and it gets redirected or mitigated or modified by the tribal council. And so, and they, they just wanted. And so, and they, they just wanted to understand ultimately, they can't do something that's at odds with what the council wants. So, but as I said. It was a good meeting and I can say the traffic delays when I went over were nothing like they were today. So that's that report. We had, item on here as far as Zach Kennedy is looking for some.
He's supposed to be sending an email. He wants to work with all the counties and come up with ideas, what. You guys would like to see the legislators work on to fix issues, not necessarily the issues that Zach is working on.
That really should be our green energy taxing, that's our number one.
And his main focus will be maybe having one or, one of you guys maybe with him on the calls at, once he comes up with a schedule. I, I will reach out to him again, say, you know, can they give us some more information? I just want you to start thinking.
About what?
Yeah.
Our, our priority should be.
Yeah, it came up during, and since the prosecutor, prosecuting attorney is in here, it came up during board pending about the under canvas hearing. Or not board pending, public comment. About the under canvas and if it gets appealed, would it be under canvas fighting the appeal? Or would it be the county fighting to uphold their own determination? The county would. So.
The hearing is down or served in lieu of you both. Just as if you had decided if it's appealed, it's fair report regardless of what the decision was.
That's, that's how I understood it. So I hope Sherry heard that. Okay.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I was unable to hear what prosecuting, uh, Quinzel said.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll relay it as far as the, to the question as to the, what the county's role will be. If the hearings examiner's decision, we will be defending the decision. If that's appealed to spirit court, then the county will be defending the hearings examiner's decision regardless of what it was, if it's appealed.
So my previous statement was mistaken.
So Sherry, I just, I just saw your recent email about the time spent working on the under canvas SEPA appeal and asking for all that. Would you mind holding off on that until we find out if this gets appealed so that we can give you the, the true and total accounting?
Um, if you don't mind, can I get the total hours spent by the county employees up until now? And then we can look at that later because at this point, we, you know, all of us sitting here in this conversation does not know whether the citizens will be appealing. The hearings examiner's decision or not. So I would like to get the hours up until now and then we will all see what happens in the. The near future, because we are on a timeline. I would like to, prosecuting Quinzel is there, is our deadline September seventh to file with Superior Court.
Yeah, I know, I don't have an answer that this, that's not really citizen comment right now. It'll be whatever the deadline is, it's the twenty-one days after, it, it's in the, the order was. Transmitted, I believe, from memory. So get your calendar out and figure that out.
I don't know the number.
I don't know the number, but that, it should be on the order.
Oh, okay, well.
It was on the written, it'll be, it was on the written order and said that I saw, it said, you know, they have twenty-one days to appeal from that date.
I have some work pending, sir.
Yes, go ahead.
So my Washington rural counties insurance pool retreat. You might have noticed that I removed the calendar. I will be attending those two brief morning session meetings, workshops via Zoom. For two reasons, one of them with our new. COVID protocols, I thought there might be some. Angst in the county that I didn't want to leave the county. But also moreover. I guess I would say I want to set a, an example to our departments that were also. I'm going to cut what I feel is wasteful spending. Because there will be some expense to the county if I run up to Seattle to, to go on a corporate retreat. So, you know, just, just to set an example, so I'm not off doing that, why I tell everybody to cut three percent. So I will be attending those via Zoom. I don't know if any of the other seven or so people will be. So there's that. I didn't. Can't go into much of it, but I did have meetings last week down at the aluminum plant and then we went to Mary Hill with some potential development. That there, so knew that you may not know about unless you're. And that was encouraging. And the last thing I had is actually for consent, and when we get to consent, we'll discuss that.
We're all done with board pending, anything else? No, I'm good. Okay, then I will, we will take up consent to pay the bills. I'm just hopping all over the.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda with all six items.
I will second the motion. Okay, I have a motion, a second on the consent agenda discussion.
Yes. So option or item number, and I can't even look where it is right now. It is the. Provisions asking for use of Norcore. When they send over their statement that says budget notes on it. To me, that does not provide enough information. So this is, yeah, contracts and fees were being the same as the previous three years. It goes and explains the rate, but that does not tell me whether this has already been budgeted. It is in their current budget or it is not in their current budget, because I seem to recall, I wasn't sitting here, I was on a phone last year during that budget process. But I, I seem to recall that there was some budget shortfalls and they were. Lowering their amount of Norcore beds and saying that they were going to use ankle bracelets. And, and so I honestly, looking at this, don't know if this is going to show up on a budget supplemental or not. I'm not going to say no to it, but what I want to do is. Work with Jen and get this information there better explained so we know is this in your current budget? And they asked them for supplemental, that this is a grant, how much can it match is. And essentially, I guess I would say your permission from you two, if possible, to work with Jen and get more definition. When people fill out these things, so we know what we're.
My understanding when I looked at it would be, it is in their current budget.
I called and asked him to call me.
That it is, understanding that the, the reason is it's now is because Norcore is on, is, is on a June or. July one to June thirtieth, but so our fiscal years are split halfway in between. You are correct, and before we had, it, it wasn't. It was. Early in the pandemic, they were way over because we, the courts weren't operating, we had some juveniles that they were basically being housed at Norcore at a hundred and sixty. So there was a supplemental budget for that. This to me appears to be what we budgeted for this year was back to the normal budgeted in our fiscal year. So starting in, in.
I'm not going to tell them no either way, and that's why I voted.
But I think you're right, as far as if you don't understand there, but. You know.
Because some departments are really good. There will be no budget impact.
Or this is budgeted.
So I want, I, I guess I'm using this as an example. To get permission from the board to have Jen expand that line item, so that we have more information when we make our decisions.
And I think it should also be like, there are circumstances like this where we are in a, if we're approving this, we are in effect. Approving through June thirtieth of neck, in next year's budget. Cause we have to allocate resources to pay the rest, the second half of this budget. Starting in June, yes ma'am.
I believe this is more of an issue with the director or elected, depending on what it is and what.
Which one it is.
Not necessarily your fiscal manager.
Well, she's, well, it's just, she's having, I guess I would say, well, I don't want to speak for her. I guess what it comes down to is changing the form. Changing the form to ask more questions and yes, that might not be the.
Okay, so then that's a, is that a conventional agenda cover? That would be our form.
Well, it should be. No, but I do think that if there is nothing, like if you don't feel like the director, in this case, it was the director, they'll let the form. Put the information that they submitted with the consent, you know, on the consent. If you don't feel like that's adequate, we can pull it and send it back and say, you need to give us more information and answer those questions.
I, I, yes, that would work fine. I don't have any problem with voting for this. I'm just using this as a. This has happened a lot and I have to pick up the phone to try to call people. This is the only one I haven't got a call back from to answer my question by the time I get to take photo. So. I would go yes on it anyway. I just want more definition in that question and, and guidance given to the people that are filling these out. To answer my question, so I don't have to call them to get the answers. I will work with you.
I'm just happy the price isn't going up because the price has gone up for everything, so I'm ready to move forward.
Yeah, because, and it's again, just so you understand, we don't, I mean, I don't want to say we don't have an option. We could try to find. Junior detention facility somewhere else. We don't want.
My argument isn't the price, my argument is. As an example of budget.
So I have a motion in a second. Or actually, did I have?
Yes, you have a second.
Okay, all those in favors, we were in discussion, all those in favors, say aye. Aye, motion passes, consensus pass. Let's move on to the bill.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we pay the accounts payroll warrants in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand. Four hundred and fifty-five thousand, or sorry, let me redo that. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to pay the accounts payroll warrants in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents in the payroll benefit warrants, the amount of zero dollars. For the date of ending, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, I have a motion of the sec to pay the bills. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, motion passed. So this to prosecuting attorney Canal.
So WAPA, which is the Washington Association of Prosecuting Attorneys, that their person-to-person meeting scheduled in place September. Who, those are virtual, it's very frustrating, the, it's not so much the training, which is important, especially for attorneys for. Continuing legal, legal education requirements, the lack of opportunity for some of the newer folks to network, which is essential. Building that rolodex is essential for, not only elect this, but you know, especially higher level management. It's pretty rare that a problem is encountered that hasn't been dealt with by, you call me. Jurisdiction and it's always good to get feedback and to try to avoid reinventing the will. Of course, if you want to reinvent the wheel, then that's most of what you'll be doing, but.
Maybe the wheel could be improved on, I don't know. Can you speak up just a minute? I've got.
So. I also need to discuss a few pending litigations that we'll have executive for, but while we're still in open, I'll take any questions that anyone has.
Yes, sir.
Appealed to the Supreme Court, when do we figure we will get an answer on whether they are going to hear, are going to hear. End date.
I anticipate within six months of the final, of cert, that we'll have an answer on whether they'll pick it up or not, so.
So we wouldn't be waiting for two years if they picked it up in six months, we know.
Correct, I mean, they declined to pick it up, it's all.
You know, we found a firm that we're confident in.
We're in consultations with two firms right now, we'll have some more information for you next Tuesday.
Okay, well, we will go into executive session and of course with the RCW forty-two point three zero. Point one one zero for an, one for an I, this is to discuss pending litigation or how much? Fifteen minutes and it should be, I want folks to note on the record or that are on the Zoom meeting, we have no other agenda items. I do not anticipate us taking any action when we come back from executive session. And so I, I think we're going to close out the Zoom portion of this. Session now and then we will adjourn when we come back.
We'll see you online people next week.
Okay, you are still on.
So stop the recording.
Yeah, I just close it all down.
Close everything.
Okay, that makes it really easy.
Yep, because we.